Okay, good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's Board of Ed meeting being held in the Town Council chambers. The date is Tuesday, October 24th, 2017. And I want to remind you, as always, that this meeting is being recorded, so please turn off all cell phones. Ellie, will you please do our roll call?
Yes. Good evening, everyone. Mr. Cassio?
Present.
Mrs. Fitzpatrick?
Present.
Mr. Forrest?
Present.
Mr. Hill? Ms. Moon?
Here.
Mrs. Paradise?
Present.
Mrs. Vassal? Vice Chairperson, Mr. Morris?
Here.
Chairperson, Mrs. Granato?
Present.
And Weathersfield High School Student Representative, Mr. Justin Bianchi?
Present.
All present.
Okay, I would like a large group from the Highcrest School to come on up front and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, all of you. And thank you, Principal O'Connell. Thank you very much. Okay, Mr. Emmett, we also have a student recognition tonight from the Charles Wright School.
We do, indeed, Mrs. Granato. Good evening, everyone. If I could please have Mr. Sotaro, Mr. Horder, and Noah Bannet come on up to the podium, please.
And Savannah.
Oh, we have some additional students coming up. Come on.
Good evening, Board of Ed members. It's always a great time to come and share just awesome stuff. Many people go out of their way all the time. For example, you all tonight, with that rainy weather, went out of your way to get out here and everyone that's here. Mr. Sotaro, fifth grade teacher, goes out of his way above and beyond every year. Parents often choose him, desire him to lead their children. He's funny, has a sense of humor. He prepares the children for the future. And, um, yes, he goes right along with that. And so I'll introduce everyone here, the teacher, Mr. Sotaro. Noah Bannet, who's done something really special, which Mr. Sotaro is going to share. And in fact, I wrote about it in one of your board memos that I just put out again. And Savannah and Oliver, who have followed his lead to do a little more and get out and go above and beyond. And all of this prepares them for their future. So, Mr. Sotaro, tell us about what you've been doing over the years.
Good evening, everybody. Thanks for having me. Very proud of my students this year. We're off to a great start. I put out a challenge at the beginning of the year for my librarian. We have classroom jobs. Every student has one. And they keep the job for two months. And the librarian's job, among other things, you know, shelving books and leveling books and introducing new books to the classroom. I put the challenge to Noah, our first librarian this year, to create a librarian's challenge. And I gave him a couple of pointers as to what he might include in it. I also had some past librarian challenge papers saved that he could look through, but really to make it his own. And among other things that he asked his classmates to consider doing was writing a letter to an author. And he had a certain criteria. I don't remember exactly what you said. It had to be maybe a paragraph long. And then, if you wanted to go even further, you can write, actually send a letter to the author. He went a little bit further than that and actually wrote to Tommy Greenwald, children's author, sent an email to him. I don't want to give away the whole thing, but I know you've read it already. Okay, received a response back from the author, saying that he would love to send him some bookmarks with his parents' permission. Could he have his address? We shared that in class, and it inspired other kids in the classroom. Two of the kids are here, Savannah and Oliver, who have written to authors. We've had another two that couldn't make it tonight. So it's just a nice way to have the kids kind of take charge in the classroom. Also, what was really nice is that, from time to time, Mr. Horder pops in after school usually, just, "How are things going? Any problems? Do you need anything?" And he noticed right away the librarian's bulletin board in the classroom. And this was early on in the school year. And, "What's this about?" And I just let him know. Noah's in the process of doing this work. And he got excited about it, started talking to the kids. And he's been checking in, you know, anybody else doing it? And surely, but surely, we have more and more kids doing the enrichment work, the extracurricular outside of the regular classroom homework. So, I'm just really proud of my kids, and that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Vic. Thank you very much.
Savannah, come on up. What book have you been reading? Or what book did you choose to read and write about?
I read Ghost.
By?
By Telger Mira.
And you're going to send that letter?
I'm going to send it to Scholastics in New York.
Okay. Good job. Oliver, come on over. Who's the author that you wrote to?
James Patterson.
And what book were you reading at the time?
I Funny.
I Funny. I Funny? Yep. Great. Thank you. And Noah coordinated all this, but today, we put together an iMovie as kind of a trailer because you don't really get to see everything. And so we want to kind of whet your appetite to come out and see these kind of things that are happening. So, let's watch it. Are you ready, Jim, for the lights? I'm ready. Spacebar. Mr. Sotaro, Noah, Savannah, Oliver, thanks for making incredible difference in following the leader, leader model that our district is growing.
Yes, very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Glenn, on behalf of the Board, thank you very much. And Victor, thank you. And Savannah, Oliver, and Noah, the Board is so proud of you. Nice job. Anyone else? Okay.
I don't think we can follow that.
I know. That was great. So creative. Okay, next on tonight's agenda, wow, not as exciting at the moment, is the approval of the minutes of the regular Board of Ed meeting on October 10th, 2017. Are there any corrections? Okay, may I have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
A second? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions?
Abstained.
Okay, those minutes are approved. And also on tonight's agenda is the approval of the minutes of our special Board of Ed meeting, our retreat, on October 17th, 2017. Are there any corrections? So Polly, you are an expert at consumer relations.
Thank you, Mr. Morris, for pointing that out.
Okay.
I don't make them up.
So no corrections. May I have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Okay? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? So those minutes are approved. And now, is there anyone wishing to come up to the podium to make a public comment? Please state your name and address, and may I remind you that we have a five-minute Okay, thank you. So, Mr. Emmett, do you have communications to share?
I do. Thank you. Good evening, again, everyone. We're obviously still awaiting word from Hartford around a budget. We're awaiting word for an actual, physical document that we can go through to see exactly where we're at. From a perspective here in Weathersfield, we continue to have the budget freeze in place. We continue to focus on holding off on positions being filled. We are focused on making sure that those positions that directly impact kids are filled. And we've filled a Grade One position, a special education position at Highcrest, and are in the process of filling a position over at WTA. We have an instructional supervisor position that we posted back in the summertime that is still on hold. We have two positions at Central Office that we've posted, one in the business office for an individual that's departed of the district, and another anticipated retirement in December. We have posted them. We're looking to build pools, but we're going to hold off until the budget comes to fruition before we fill those particular positions. Obviously, this is a frustrating time, to say the least. But we continue to be mindful of making very prudent decisions financially, and right now, we're holding our own. We had a finance committee meeting earlier that Ms. Moon will speak of later. Right now, we're seeing an increase in expenditures around special education, and we're running a little bit high on electricity at this point in time. With the budget freeze, we still continue to be favorable. So she'll provide details on that. I want to talk a little bit about the family learning program. This program, actually, we'll have this before you at an upcoming board meeting. Today, I started a partnership with the Varabi Vernon Regional Adult Board of Education, the Weathersfield Public Schools, and the YMCA. This particular program began over at Trinity Episcopal Church this morning, and it is a family learning program. It is grant-funded, and it's done really through the hard work of Kim Bobbin, the work of our group at WECC. And this is a free program for families who speak English as a second language. And we're bringing in students as young as, nine months was our youngest today. I will be sending you photos that Sally took today when she went to the program. We were at the WECC annual meeting last night, and we're talking with some parents that were starting the program today. We talked with a three-year-old who was absolutely elated to be going to school today and could not wait. This is the hard work that goes on. This is outside of the work that we do, you know, within our own budget, looking for grant opportunities. Certainly, our partners at Varabi, as well as the Y, are to be commended for the work that they're doing. So we'll have an upcoming presentation for you. Also, as the program gets up and running, it's a three-day-a-week program, certainly invite board members to go out and see the program in action. We're very pleased to be able to provide this outreach to our families long before they come in for kindergarten. Also, I have some good news this evening with regard to grant funding. We've received notification from the state that we will be receiving funds under the Title IV grant. The Title IV grant deals with safe schools and drug-free schools. We used to get this funding years back, and then we were no longer eligible. We'll be receiving a total of $10,000. With that, we'll tie that into our Wellness Committee. And actually, on Thursday, I'll be participating in a WebEx with Mrs. Distoli with the state to talk about how that funding will be dispersed. At this point in time, we have the question as to, given the fact that we have schools that are Title I, whether or not this funding is tied just to the schools that are Title I, or if all of our schools can access this. So we're certainly looking at opportunities to bring in speakers around the issue of bullying, anti-bullying, the social media piece that we've talked about before. So this is certainly good news. I made mention a little earlier about the WECC annual meeting, had the opportunity to attend that last night. I know several of you were in attendance at that as well. And I must say, I was very, very impressed with the work that our parent panel did. Jessica, Mary Kay, and Nirmine did a wonderful job, talking about their experiences in Weathersfield, talking about how they have worked with WECC and made Weathersfield a better place. What I was struck by last night is, in each case, they talked about the fact that they moved to Weathersfield for the quality education that it provides. As your superintendent, I was really, really pleased to hear that. I think, in terms of moving forward, there's a lot of energy. I think that the parents are really embracing this group, and I think that it has many great things to provide us. In addition to that, I will be showing you a video clip of the summer program that we did over the course of the summer over at Webb. I had mentioned it earlier, and the Hartford Foundation for Public Giving had done a brief video of this event that took place. Chris Fox and Maria Aparo, both our teachers in Weathersfield, really spearheaded this program. And it was an opportunity to get kids into a kindergarten setting that had not had a preschool experience. There were a lot of tears, you know, both among parents and among students. But what it did is it provided our teachers the opportunity to assess where the kids were at. So teachers, getting kids in that didn't have that preschool experience, actually had kind of a blueprint of what the child needed. And it was interesting, when I went, there was one particular individual, this poor young lady, she cried every day, but she stuck with it. And I went to Emerson Williams early last week and went into the cafeteria and had lunch with her. There are no more tears. She's comfortable, she's, you know, acclimated very nicely to the class, and she's making great progress. So those are the types of things that we certainly want to see. Want to give you an update with regard to gym floors. I had made mention that we'd been dealing with some issues in some of our gym floors with regard to the product that goes down, the polyurethane peeling up specifically at Silas Dean. This was a big issue, and it's been an issue at our other elementary schools that have the wood floors. Fred has really worked hard with the company to hold them accountable. We believe that it had nothing to do with how the product was put down. We've used this product for years. So the company that actually sells the product came out, they determined that it was a chemical imbalance in the product. So Silas Dean Middle School, Webb Elementary School, Charles Wright Elementary School, Hanmer Elementary School, and Highcrest Elementary School are all going to get their gym floors completely sanded down and completely relined and new logos put down, at the expense of the company, not the Weathersfield Public Schools. That's certainly nice, because we'll have some nice-looking new gym floors. That's great. The only issue is that, obviously, from a scheduling perspective, typically, we would do this during the course of the summer, but we feel it's important to do it now, given the fact we've got basketball starting up, travel basketball. So Mr. Bushy met today with the gym teachers during their professional development to kind of lay out a schedule. Obviously, this does not have any impact on Emerson Williams. They already got their new rubberized floor. And it does not impact the high school, because the high school floor was not done. So we're looking forward, over the next month, to getting all of our gym floors finished. And certainly, that's some good news. Starting blocks. We received word from Fred that the starting blocks are due to ship on Thursday of this week. We're hoping that the starting blocks come in and arrive here in Weathersfield on Friday. There is talk about the potential of putting the starting blocks in on Saturday. The starting blocks will not be put in by our staff, will be put in by the vendor. This is obviously contingent upon how quickly they arrive. But Fred spoke with the contact yesterday, and they are due to ship from the factory on Thursday. So finally, I want to mention, I attended the Emerson Williamstown meeting, and one of our upcoming staff-student recognitions is going to be the ukulele club. I don't know how I'm going to get all of the kids here. We have to work on that. But the ukulele club was actually the brainchild of the Keene After School Program. And we had, I want to say, better than 30 kids up in front of the whole student body on Friday, playing their ukuleles that were provided by the Keene Foundation. This is a grant-funded program, and actually, Emily Caravella, our music teacher at Emerson Williams, is spearheading this and is teaching the kids. So it was great to see the kids involved, certainly. And Ellen, I know you were there, and you probably can imagine, like I thought, the vibe was just great. It was excellent. So again, thanks to the staff at Emerson Williams. It certainly was an uplifting event. I know some of you have been able to get to town meetings. I highly recommend them. They really emphasize the good that goes on in the schools and recognizes our great students. So with that, that's communications.
Thank you.
Excuse me, can I just ask?
Any comments?
Yeah, just ask one question. In regard to the starting blocks, Mr. Emmett?
Yes.
So will they be installed for the girls, while the girl season is still going on? Or, I'm just not sure of how long, and then the boys starts later, right?
Yes, that's correct. The girls, at this point in time, I believe, have one more away meet this week. I talked with Mike Maltesi today, our athletic director. Obviously, we need to physically get them here first.
Right.
Mr. Bushy's well aware of the fact that we want to make this a priority and get these in. So it's just going to depend upon the logistics. The other piece that I want to be careful of is, I need to look at what the swim schedule is, the practice schedule is for the girls. So we don't want to impede upon that. So that's going to take some coordination. But the intent is to try and get them in as soon as we possibly can.
Well, considering how awesome they're doing and the records they're setting.
I...
Yeah, right. It's been a good year for them.
I attended the meet against Enfield and Summers and was quite impressed.
Really?
Quite impressed.
Okay. Thank you.
John?
I just had a question regarding the family learning program.
Yes.
Did we receive the funds already, or are they going to be shipped?
Yeah, we've received them already.
We did.
We're the fiscal agent. This is a federal grant.
All right.
So, you know, these are the types of things, obviously, down the road, we're going to have to look at the what happens when the grant funding runs out. But this, you know, again, as a program to engage members of the community, you know, one of the things that was impressive to me last night about the WECC meeting was the diversity that was in the room. I thought it was really, you know, impressive to see.
Well, one of the things we, you know, did talk about, you know, when we do receive funding for grants, and then we don't have the ability to fund them any longer, maybe there needs to be an open dialogue at the very beginning that, you know, we're under a funding right now, a federal government grant. And then, you know, there's a good possibility to keep this family learning program continuum, that there may be a charge.
Mm-hmm.
You know, so that we're not, once again, caught with another program that we're, you know, that is very important, but now we're, you know, if there's no grant money, we're stuck funding it because it's the way of the world and the fabric of Weathersfield that we want to continue working in that vein. So I just thought maybe that dialogue needs to be brought to the surface, you know, for future. I don't know how long that grant's going to last.
Yeah, I totally agree with that. And I think that, you know, when you look at the work we're doing in starting the Education Foundation here in Weathersfield, last night at the WECC meeting, we had Richard Sussman, who oversees the Hartford Foundation for Public Giving. That money, money from the Hartford Foundation for Public Giving, was the impetus to do that summer school program for the kindergarten. So, and I agree with you wholeheartedly. We've seen that happen before, where the grant funding, you know, runs out. But I know that the charge for me was to look for grant funding and look for additional options that we have. And look, we've talked about this with our budgets. Our budgets get tighter and tighter, and we need to look for other sources of revenue and other sources of funding to support the good work we do with our kids. So, good point.
Okay, Elaine?
I think John's years of expertise has seen this happen repeatedly. We get a great idea on the table, we get it started with funds from a grant, and then, now it's your job. So I think his fair warning to us to look at it before it's the last day it's due is an excellent one, John. You know, we always let things go, and then it disappears. We don't have it anymore.
Absolutely.
So you've seen it happen repeatedly. So it's a good point that he brought up for all of us to think about. It would be helpful if we find out just what he asked. How long is this grant good for?
Two years. Two years, probably. Yeah, sure.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, we'll move on, then.
I have no thunder left on my whip.
So under action items.
[laughing]
Elaine, we're going to get you again. Please read Motion 6A for us.
Move that the Board of Education approve a modified teacher evaluation plan for the 2017-18 school year.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? I think we have people in the...
We do.
Thank you.
Mrs. Distoli and Mr. Burlow, come on up, please.
Good evening, everybody.
Hi, Heather.
Hi, Matt.
So tonight, we bring forward some changes to the teacher evaluation and professional development support plan. The teacher evaluation committee meets periodically throughout the year. A subcommittee of that met over the summer, a couple times in July, to look at changes. And we're bringing forward to you the kind of the fruits of the labor of the conversations we've had with our teacher evaluation committee and recommended changes. The changes presented tonight have been approved by the Connecticut State Department of Education. They have to approve them before we bring them to you. We are recommending implementation of these changes this school year, as of tomorrow. And Matt and I are both going to talk about some of the changes. One of the first changes I want to point out to you is the legislative requirements. The changes in our document now no longer tie our teacher goals, our educator evaluation to standardized assessments. Several years ago, there was legislation around using assessments like Smarter Balanced Assessment, CMT, and other state assessments tying those to the evaluation process. There have been a few things that have happened, one, not getting the data back in time, and a change in practice. So we have not used that practice in Weathersfield because the data has not been available and the time constraints. But we now formally have updated our plan to align with the legislative requirements. Matt?
Another element that's changed, or we've been able to change in this draft, is the number of evaluations or observations you have to do per year. And that's been one of the biggest issues that takes teachers and administrators out of the role of working just on behalf of children and kind of working in order to meet the requirements of the legislation. So one of the great things that we were able to do with this is reduce that. So instead of having, we call them formals and informal observations, but instead of having a formal and an informal observation during the year, we just need a formal observation. We don't need to do that informal piece. That means there's a few less steps in which we need to go through to meet the requirements of this, and that'll help enhance the conversations we have about teaching and learning and get us focused on what we need to do for the kids.
Matt, on that particular statement, it said, you said, reduce observations to just one formal.
Yes.
But isn't that for a certain class of teachers?
Yes.
Because that could be outside, people that are listening, and I happen to be at the meeting, so I caught it.
Yeah.
But I think you may want to clarify.
Yeah, so there is more than one class of teachers. So that would be for someone that has had at least, that's in their third year in Weathersfield or more, and has already scored at the level of proficient, that's level three. And that language, proficient, is prescribed in the legislation by the state, so we have to use that language. Proficient or above, and in the third year. If you are a first or second-year teacher, either to the profession, you know, brand-new teacher, or to the district, you'd go through a different set, and the number of evaluations there hasn't changed. So that's the same as our existing plan. These changes are focused on that year three plus.
Anyone else with questions? Polly?
Yeah, when you talk about just a, maybe you can clarify for me, when you talk about only having a formal evaluation now and no informal evaluation, could you just kind of differentiate between the two?
Sure. Yeah, so a formal observation, the way that we've described it, and the way the legislation describes it, it's scheduled. It's at least 30 minutes, and that means the evaluator's in the classroom for at least 30 minutes. It's got a pre and a post component to it. So you're discussing what you're planning and what is intended to have happened in the lesson beforehand. You do the lesson, the evaluator observes, and then afterwards, you have kind of a post session. You talk about how the lesson went, you know, where the objectives met. Did anything else go on? Was instruction adjusted? That's our formal definition. The informal definition was scheduled or unscheduled, was at least 10 minutes, and just required feedback. And the feedback could be an email, it could be a phone call, it could be a conversation, you know, if you did the last 10 minutes of a class, as soon as the class was over. Not having that element helps reduce the number of times that someone has to make sure they get out to a place to do the thing to observe this, and kind of helps reduce the number of disruptions we have. It reduces the paperwork, I think, also on the administrative end, because they don't have to fill out all the forms and enter the stuff into the computer. So that's the part that we took out as being a requirement, just again, for the year three plus in Weathersfield.
And I think that the spirit of the committee, of all members on the committee, was really about reflection, professional growth, and improving our craft as a district. So we talked a lot about compliance related to legislative requirements and what we must do, and then also the spirit of professional growth, and how we can support professional growth through conversations and support teachers, but reduce the compliance and the paperwork. And that's really, I think, sums up the really big conversations we had, and really a lot of consensus around how we do that, was all of us in the committee had consensus around that.
Yeah, that was the only thing that I was just thinking, when you hear informal, I Yeah, that was the only thing that I was just thinking, when you hear informal, I was thinking in terms of something that's just kind of, you know, that's helpful and not, you know, no pressure, I'm just coming into, you know, that type of thing. That's not, that doesn't require a lot of paperwork and follow-up and that type of thing. So, I, you know, that was the main thing I was thinking of was if people, if, you know, whether it's an administrator or another staff person or whatever, is not conducting something that's kind of an informal, not necessarily a gotcha type of thing, but that, would, do you lose something?
Right, yeah. No, I understand the question, yeah. So, actually, one of the things that we had considered and put forward to the state was a plan that would be more like a cycle plan. So, you do one formal, and again, I'm talking really about the three, year three plus level. You do one formal every three years, and in off-years, you would do, say, three informals. The plan we put forward was two informals and a review of practice. The state wanted it to be at least three informals. But the issue kind of becomes then, if you're doing three things, now you have to keep track of three things.
Right, right, yeah.
So, and even though the teacher may not have to do as many steps for the informal, there's still gonna be meetings, there's still gonna be follow-ups. You're still doing the same amount of time because three informals is at least thirty minutes and one formal is at least thirty minutes. And members of the committee have shared that having that step of being able to plan the lesson and also to know when the evaluator is coming is helpful.
Right.
And these are all set as minimum guidelines too. So, if you wanted more or to change something, you can do that in agreement with your administrator. So, I don't think we've lost anything in doing that.
Okay, good, thanks.
John?
I have two questions for Matt. Is this, how is a staff receive this kind of a change in the process?
Great. So, anything that is less would be received as a checkmark. Yes, great. So, when we started, in the first year, we were doing like, I don't know, like six things, and then we were, in the next years, we were able to change it. This will be well received. And that committee has members from each level, from each building, on the teacher's side, there's administrators there. And we've talked around this issue quite a lot. And this is a direction that everyone would like to move in. And it's a great example of teachers and administrators working together to make something better for everyone. So, it will be well received.
And so for Sally then, is this still gonna give us a rigorous enough evaluation process where we can identify any issues we have and address them?
Yeah, most definitely. As Matt mentioned, this is a minimum requirement. And so, it allows us to kind of, again, it's not about checking off the paperwork, but really focus on those conversations. And there are, as in the past, times where we'll add on additional observations and sometimes from the teacher's perspective. You've heard me talk about photo album snapshots and having multiple snapshots. So, sometimes teachers will say, no, you know what, that really wasn't the only lesson I want you to see. I want you to come and see another lesson. The teacher might ask for another observation, and or the administrator might ask. So, there, I think it's working through the process, but I think the committee is focused on really how we provide support, reflective conversations, and growth. And we definitely don't wanna get into this, you know, gotcha, it's more about providing support and growth. So, I think, well, I know everybody on the committee feels that this change meets the needs of both teachers, administrators, but also adds flexibility. So, from the committee, we've heard about people that, you know, they prefer the formal. They like to know when people are coming, scheduled, planned. Other people prefer informals. There's, you know, people have different preferences and styles, but this meets the legislative requirements for the minimum. But at any time, there are conversations between teachers and administrators that can look at different aspects, again, focused on growth, to meet the needs of both the evaluation instrument, but also of teachers' growth. So, yeah, we're very excited about these changes and realistic because it is not the end of August we come forward to you. We had to go back to the drawing board and make some more revisions, but confident we can make these changes. They're very simple to make during year, but also we've talked about changes we might bring forward in the future of really digging in some of the bigger things of how we can even streamline it better, given some pretty strict legislative requirements. I think in hindsight, if we talk about mandate relief, reducing the number of all the requirements related to teacher evaluation so that people can be creative and come together with thoughtful plans without having quite so many requirements from the state. Just keep that in mind as you're talking to people.
From day one, I was on this committee, and it, Matt, you have done an outstanding job of steering us to something smaller. I mean, I knew of teachers carrying milk crates in for their end-of-the-year evaluation. And that, I was hoping, was not the purpose of the state's goal, and you worked it down. My only question is, I have two questions. Matt, if you had a formal evaluation by a teacher and you did not care for what was said, let's just say it was not, is there a dispute way or a way you can reconcile that?
There is, yeah. So, there's an existing process called the dispute resolution process, and that's one of the other small changes that we made to it. So, let's say that, in the example you give where something's stated and the teacher disagrees with that. There's a process that you can go through to address concerns there. And it can be used too if you're having an issue about the number of times of observations should be scheduled or when they should be scheduled. We can use that. The small change we made was to clarify the steps because in reviewing it, it became confusing and the old style. So, we put in a chart, we put in timelines, it's very clear at every step who has to do what and when it has to be done.
And my second thought is, and this may have been taken out, Matt, I don't really know. But we have a circle graph that has a wedge for ten percent of parent feedback. Did we get, keep that in?
That still exists, yes. So, and that's...
So, how will we gather that information?
That, I believe, is different at each district, or not each district, each school. So, our school is doing some parent surveys through Google Forms and emailing them out about questions developed on staff. And it's how, if you know, other buildings.
Yeah, so we used to do some district and school surveys. We no longer do that. But one of the things to remember is that the school survey data is important for, to reflect upon, but its parent survey data is not used to evaluate our educators. I think that's one of the misconceptions across Connecticut. It's a goal that the entire school's embracing. It might be about communication, problem solving, students becoming more independent, career exploration. Again, different, in different buildings, related to their school improvement plan. Teachers are evaluated on their action steps, implementing that, not upon the feedback from parents. But it's, the feedback from parents is very important because we use that to select other goals, to evaluate the work we're doing, and to reflect upon the work related to that goal. So, we do get feedback.
Will that teacher rating include that ten percent of the parent feedback that I put in this circle?
So, it's, yes. So legislatively, it's a ten percent on a parent goal, but not based upon feedback from parents. It's the strategic, it's the steps they've outlined, what they're gonna do related to that goal, a shared goal across the entire school. And that's one of the legislative requirements. So, that's no change to that.
Okay, I think I got it. It's very difficult. Matthew, you were beyond helpful with me.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Well, I need to say, I applaud you because it's been two years and I still miss the children very much. I miss teaching very much, but I don't miss that state evaluation tool at all. I found it very cumbersome. I don't think, when it was first implemented, that allowed teachers to really teach and get feedback. It was kind of a paper game, and your simplifying of it is fabulous. I went to one of your meetings and the work was well done.
Well, thank you.
Thank you. Matt?
Just one question on something I was listening to you guys about. Are we treating teachers in different schools, maybe treating is not the right word. Are we evaluating teachers in different schools possibly differently if we're using different types of process for, I guess it was the parent feedback section of the thing?
Not really. So, the questions that may be asked at one school may be different than another. But the way the teacher's graded is based on the plan the teacher creates, right? So, for example, at the middle school, we're working on helping kids with problem-solving skills. How do you solve the problem yourself? And one of the examples I've used in my classes is there's a problem-solving strategy kids use all the time, and it's called Ask the Teacher. But there's many other strategies that you can use. So, I ask them, before you ask me, and I'll absolutely help you, what else could you do, right? So, that's the strategy I'm helping with. I made a plan of how I'm gonna do that. My evaluation is based on the plan that I do. So, even if the focus area changes, I get to make my own plan, and then I get evaluated on, did I do my plan? So, it won't really change how the teacher is evaluated.
But I heard that there was maybe a different process that you're using at different schools. Is that like, is it different across elementary schools? You said at different schools, we're gonna be doing it in a different way. And I didn't know if that was like a level thing, or is it like Charles Wright gonna be doing it at a different high press or Emerson only? Or is that like, you know, the high school is different cohort of students, obviously, than the elementary school does? So, we have to do the evaluation differently, and I didn't understand what the difference was.
Okay, I think if you're referring to like the comment I made about the Google Form, the survey, the survey instrument may be different at schools, and I can't speak to that because I only know the survey instrument at my school and that it's a Google Form. But you can collect parent feedback through a variety of methods. So, at the middle school, it's the survey, and other buildings, it may be different. So, that method may be different, but regardless of the method, you're still evaluated on, you know, the teacher-created plan. Did I make a plan? Did I do my plan?
Are we planning on having a different method at different schools? And if so, why? And if not, okay, we're not.
Yeah, so we no longer do district surveys, so in the plan, there are options. Again, the plan, the options come from the state recommendations. It could be a survey, it could be a focus group. It could, it's a lot of different ways to collect that anecdotal feedback. It does not have to be a survey. Often, surveys are a tool that we might use, but it could be a focus group.
So, what are we planning to do?
There is up to each individual school to develop that plan based upon current feedback from parents and implement that plan at its school level. The evaluation process, though, is identified in the plan and has some criterias across schools. So, yes, different schools and different teachers. So, Matt shared his strategy. The math teacher might be doing something different than the PE teacher and the language arts teacher. So, it's individualized, related to the individual teacher, but around a core goal at a school. So, it is school-based feedback and how they collect that from parents.
Okay. And were there any, we heard about a lot of the positives, obviously, which all sound great.
Yeah.
But were there any concerns by the teachers that maybe didn't, or were there any concerns, and were there any concerns by the administration that maybe didn't get filtered through with this particular version?
I don't think with this version. I mean, most of the concerns, I think Ms. Renato mentioned, the state is pretty prescriptive with its legislation. So, even with the changes we've made, we're guided largely by what has to be done to be legally compliant. In terms of concerns, if there was a way to address that through this process grade, there's not, unfortunately. And I think this represents our best step forward with what we are able to do, at least from the teacher's side.
Yeah, no, I would totally agree.
It was a massive undertaking.
Thank you for your time.
You remember those meetings, don't you, Elaine?
Oh, yes, from 2011 on.
Yes.
All set? Okay, any further discussion on it? All right, thank you. So, seeing none, let's have a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? So, motion six A passes. All right. At tonight's meeting, we do have a report on our strategic plan draft from the co-chairs, John Cassio and myself, and also from Mr. Emmett. So, I'm very pleased to be working with my fellow board members and the school board administrator, administration on a steering committee for the strategic plan for the Weathersfield school system. A strategic plan, or more accurately, in our case, a skinny strategic plan, is a document that lists deliberate choices that we are making to focus all of our efforts in the years ahead. In some cases, this will mean staying the course to sustain successes already in place. And in other instances, we are defining new areas of investment and development to achieve our goals. Of course, this strategic plan is intended to guide us and is not written in stone. It will be a living document, and we will continually be measuring it in terms of reality and effectiveness. The Weathersfield Public School Strategic Plan also includes our vision and mission statement. These will be definitions of where we intend to be and how will we get there. We focus on answering these questions. How do we educate? What kind of learners do we create? And why do we approach education the way we do? The strategic plan is gonna be set up with goals, which are our priority areas for growth, that focus the energy and skills of the school district toward realizing our collective vision, strategies, which are specific approaches to the efforts that are necessary to realize the goals and achieve desired results, and the actions, which are the steps, people, and other resources that are required to execute a specific strategy. So, I hope when the time comes and everyone reads the draft, that's both the staff and the public, that we'll provide you with a clear sense of our mission, our values, and belief that all of our students deserve a world-class education that will prepare them for success in college, career, and life. And I'm gonna hand it over to John, who's gonna tell us how we hope to get it out to you.
Thank you, Bobby. Yes, that was the, how do we put it together? How do we get it out there? And so, the communications committee of the Board of Education came together at the high school before school got out. And we met with the committee as well as a group of students and the instructor. And what I have to say is, this, after we met, the kids were very excited. So, Bobby and I self and the kids got together this past summer to create this project. And I've got some, I think, some key words. These students are very passionate about what they were doing. They're committed. They are very creative. They're learning, and most of all, they're very respectful to the project and how we are going forward. They were Danielle Kolbath, Christina Yornaros, Aaron Robles, and our own Justin Bianchi. And so with that, we met with the high school students and their advisor, Sue Coco, and the Eagle, Blue Eagle Productions. The students were excited because they thought it'd be a quick project.
Little did they know.
And they welcomed the opportunity, and they said, yeah, we can't wait. Well, guess what? The video is almost done. And it's, our goal is to have it completed this month, and as Bobby mentioned, get it out for our next steps. One of the things that we should be very proud of is that this project is just the beginning with the communications committee. Get the word out. This Board of Ed has done so many remarkable things, but we don't tell people what we're doing. And this is a way that we can start communicating and also get collaboration with students within our high school to get the word out. These are their future dreams and future professions that they wanna do when they grow out of the high school level. It's a hidden gem that we have within the school. The students are sponges. They are very respectful, but they do speak their mind. And this was our first time being on camera, and in a sense that we had monitors and look here, turn right, don't look at each other, don't do that. And so, it was intense, but it was a learning process for everyone. We discussed the timeline. Most importantly, we asked them, how do they feel about the project? Is this something they would like to put their name to and be a part of the broadcasting? So, when we started talking like that, we discussed customer service. We discussed the options of making sure that they were happy with what they achieved, but also the customer achieved. So, that was truly, I believe, a learning process for the students. And when they do get into the career and they have to go into a workforce, you know, they have to please the customer. And they're gonna be paid for it. Now, they're getting a learning environment, and some are doing independent studies. So, having said that, I truly believe these students earned their wings and they've done a great job, and we should be very proud of them. And it was interesting, at the last session we met, their instructor, Sue Coco, is remarkable. She guides them. She doesn't tell them what to do, but encourages them, well, what about this and what about that? And there's a give and take, and then finally, there's a happy medium of where we go with the next step. So, I think it was, it wasn't easy, but it was fun. And I can't thank you enough at the Weathersfield High School, the students and staff for everything. And it'll be a continuum that I think the Board of Ed is gonna, to be working with. So, we have another, I think, feather with the Eagle Productions.
Oh, geez.
It took a while for everyone to get it.
Yeah, we got it.
But, yeah, I think it was good, and I'm excited. So, bear with us, and our next step will be our superintendent with his comments.
Now, how do I follow this?
I don't know.
I don't know. I have to say that this process, you know, in education, many times, we get to the point where we want it done yesterday, and it has to be done quickly. This is a process that is taking time, and I have to applaud this board. And I know as I sit here among you tonight... And I know, as I sit here among you tonight, this is our last regularly scheduled meeting before the election, and I could not be more proud of the work that has gone on. In terms of the goals, our goals in draft form at this point in time, talk about student achievement. Talk about educator development and accountability. They talk about family and community engagement. They talk about management, operations, and finance. They talk about ensuring a safe and positive school environment that promotes a results-based culture. It talks about plan management, ensuring ongoing review, development, and measurement of the plan's goals, strategies, and actions. You are laying the groundwork and the foundation for the work of future boards, and that's critically important. One of the things that we did last week, we had the retreat where we had Lyle Kirkman, our consultant, come in and work with us on the process of revamping, not revamping per se, but really reviewing this strategic plan, looking at the realities of our budget or lack thereof, and moving forward in terms of how we prioritize this process and what we hone in on. One of the key components in terms of our next steps is to make sure that we get this information out to our stakeholders. First and foremost, this information needs to get out to our teachers, our custodians, our secretaries in Paris, our lunch aids, all of our folks in the buildings for their feedback. And when we send this document out, the idea is not just, "Give me some feedback," because what tends to happen is you don't get any. So, we need, as a steering committee, to work to develop a framework of questioning that we're looking for from our teachers, from our support staff members, to ensure that they have feedback and are able to provide us with their insight on this. So, the next step for us is, as the steering committee, to come together, take into account all of the priorities that you brought forward at the retreat last week, and hone in on the plan and get this out to teachers and support staff. At that point in time, we take into account exactly what John and Bobby have done, and that's to use the Blue Eagle Productions. I happen to see it. I know it's been a work in progress. I've been very impressed with what it has to say. Because once we get it out and we get the feedback from our staff, it needs to get out into the community. And it needs to be part of a way we do business. John mentioned customer service. One of the things that we talked about during our administrative group last week, last Tuesday before the retreat, was the piece on customer service. How we interact with parents and members of the community, how we network, how we deal with having to say no. The answer is not always going to be yes. But how do we go about doing it in a manner that is professional and gets the message across? I'm proud of where we're going. This is a very clear framework of what we're doing. And I think you saw tonight with, from communications to what you saw with staff-student recognition, our pledge of allegiance. We value our kids. We value the educational system in our community. So, I see this as a really strong framework in terms of moving forward. So, the idea here is to meet with Lyle via phone conference within the week to talk further about this. Again, taking into account, which is interesting, each of you had your own ideas of what was the priority. So, we need to summarize that, and we need to be able to prioritize these. So, for example, some of the things that we talked about, some of the actions within the plan, we've talked about really being budget-dependent and maybe not being able to go forward with those upfront, or kind of honing in and making sure that this plan is something that works. The key piece here is making sure that this is a plan that does not sit on the shelf, such as the case with our school improvement plans. Those school improvement plans are living, breathing documents. Our administrators utilize them for their evaluations. Our teachers are clear with regard, you heard Matt tonight talk about problem solving. There you go. Student achievement, problem solving, and civics. Those are the main three tenants that we're focusing on in the district. So, I'm excited to see where we're headed, and again, we're looking to get this document out for public consumption very shortly.
Thank you. Any questions? Kevin?
Thank you. And I'd like to thank you, Madam Chair, and Mr. Cassio for kind of taking this initiative on, working with Ms. Coco and the brave students. They had to deal with you for the months and months. No, but thank you very much. I mean, one of the challenges we've been talking about through this last few years is how do we amplify the message, Weathersfield Public Schools, and get it out to the community, working with students and staff, and working in our state-of-the-art high school and to show, we're going to be able to show our community what it has to offer. And what better way to do it than with a strategic plan, looking forward to how we bring the school system from where we are now and move it into the future? So, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Anyone else? Elaine?
Seems like I got a lot to say tonight. Years ago, we didn't go to this detail to create a vision for our school system, but we all had a little document sent to us to put in our classrooms. And I would really think that if the board members agree that some kind of a poster of that piece that you sent us, Bobby and John, the big piece, was in each building. So, you know, parents go in to see a game. They're not here. They don't have time for this, looking it up online sometimes. A poster in each building would be a nice way to keep it out there for, you know, for people to see, Mike, you know? It's just a thought, you know?
Thank you.
Depends on everybody agrees or not.
Anyone else? Okay. Well, thank you. Well, one of the pieces to this is that it is a skinny plan, and we don't mean that lightly. We mean that it's going to be pinpointed to things that we really want to focus on, and the whole system will know what it needs to focus on. And I was saying recently that there have been years in the past where there's so many focuses that you really don't concentrate. And this is a great way to let this thing mature into what our system will be. So, we'll keep pushing it. All right. So, for meetings held, so our school projects building committee, Mr. Emmett?
I didn't attend that. I was sitting right here next to you for a board meeting, so nothing to report.
Nothing.
Sorry.
We know where you were. Our special board of education meeting, our retreat, Kevin?
Yes, thank you. As Mr. Emmett alluded to, Lyle Kirkman came and kind of facilitated a meeting with the board and the administration, where we had a presentation on the leader-leader model and how we can kind of empower teachers and staff. And we, well, we had a great example of it today with Mr. Sotaro's class, and something we've experienced early year, last year, with Ambassador Williams for the Look for the Good campaign. That was a tremendous success that I know is going to be replicated this year. And like Mr. Emmett said, we went over the strategic plan, our kind of customer service model that we're trying to roll out this year, and we individually talked about next steps and what, you know, what each board member kind of values within the plan that we'd like to see carried out and continued into boards in the future. But it was a great meeting, and it was kind of eye-opening to see, as Mr. Emmett alluded to, where we all have kind of different priorities, but we all fit into the same framework.
Thank you. Any discussion on our retreat? Any other comments? Okay. CREC, which is the Capital Region Education Council, had its meeting on October 18th, and I was unable to attend and disappointed because the networking with 35 other surrounding towns is always very informative. Their next council meeting is November 15th. Weathersfield Early Childhood Collaborative, which was their annual meeting last night, Matthew?
Well, we've spoken a lot about this already. Thank you, Mr. Superintendent.
Sorry.
No, there's no reason to apologize. You did a fantastic job. The annual meeting, I think, was really a celebration to open the Family Learning Program or the Early Learning Center, as I'm kind of saying it in my head. And I guess, as this is sort of one of my last meetings on this particular board, I just wanted to, I guess I just wanted to elaborate on holistically what WEC is and whoever's sort of going to replace me as a liaison. And I just wanted to leave this board with one thing, because there certainly will be our four-year members continuing. I'm sure that some of the people that are still on here will be re-elected and on this board. But if you can remember one thing, and that is that children do not start learning when they enter kindergarten. They start learning three, four, three years before that. And if you look at any kindergarten class, you can see that there are children that are not ready to climb the mountain for the next 13 years, and there are children that are clearly ready to climb the mountain for the next 13 years. And that discrepancy, I have a child in kindergarten, my kindergarten class, and I'm sure all the educators that are early childhood education, and the numbers play it out. The way in which kids enter and their abilities is a direct correlation to our test scores that you will see in third grade. And their ability, the ability for children to have a strong early childhood education in whatever form it is, even if it's homeschooling, if the parent has that, there are, we have set a seed with the little money that we set aside over the last two years, the little money that the town set aside, and they should be congratulated for that because it was a shared grant. And look what this seed has created. We had, if you remember, we had the Weathersfield Family Resource Center website now, so all Weathersfield families can get all the resources that they need in a singular place for early childhood and babysitting and daycare and extracurricular. And if your child's having a development problem, where to go for that? We have the, we now have the Community Leadership School and the Early Learning Center, and that was because the Hartford Foundation and WEC got together to get a grant to pay for all this. And now, we've got these two classrooms that I think hold up to 20 or 30 or 40 individuals, where now, we're going to bring in families that are, are set up and to not have the English skills for their children to enter school. And many times, the parents don't have the English skills to teach their children how to enter school with those good skills. And now, we're going to bring in the parents as a community. We're going to bring in all of our community resources. I'm sure there's going to be retired teachers that are going to be volunteering. The kids are going to be in there at an early age. You heard nine months, because that's where it's going to start. But of course, there's two-year-olds and three-year-olds, so that our most, are the segment of our population that would normally have come in and not be ready to make that climb, for whatever reason, now is going to be able to make that, start that journey earlier, and it's going to pay off in the future. So, as we move forward, and I'm not going to be sitting in this seat, please remember that those little seeds that we planted are growing now and that we continue to support the expansion of these types of resources, so our whole community can come together to then have great test scores for this Board of Education come three years from now and four years from now. And that that is so very important. So, that was essentially, I think, a lot of the gist of what was talked about at the annual meeting, about the success that we're having, about the seed that was planted, about the tree that's growing, and about where Weathersfield's going in early childhood education.
Thank you, Matthew. Anyone else on that? Polly?
So, are those like feathers in the Blue Eagle?
Yes. You have your metaphor on that side of the dais, and we have ours.
Sorry.
No, no, it was good.
Seed, feathers, we got it. But you know, Matthew, you mentioned that, you know, out of this comes good test scores, but also, to be able to look at a kindergartner who understands what's going on is really priceless, too. That's another piece to this.
It comes with the emotional development. I mean, the whole, you're treating the whole community, the whole family, the whole family unit.
I agree.
Excuse me?
That cut you off. I'm sorry. Polly?
It wasn't just one joke. No, I have never, no more. I have, yeah, I have a whole ton.
Try the wheel, right?
She's here all night. There you go. No, one of the, and I know we've, we've had a lot of discussion about this, but I just wanted to follow up that one of the most fantastic things that I thought about the program last night was the parent panel, and the fact that we had three different people who had three different stories as to how they came into Weathersfield, how they came to Weathersfield, and how they, the fact, as Mr. Emmett pointed out, the fact that they wanted to expose their children to our education process, which first of all, made me very proud. But also, and as a, as a citizen of the fact that, I was very proud of the fact that every single one of them said how much they loved Weathersfield, they love Weathersfield. And so, seeing three people from completely three different backgrounds and with different stories, and with the whole idea that it starts with a cup of coffee, and they all just sit down together and exchange ideas, I think, is very exciting. But I also wanted to mention the fact that there, that as each one of them pointed out, they came from, they came as young parents to Weathersfield, didn't really know anybody. And one of the things that impressed me was the fact that there were other, there were some who were connected, who became connected with the school system and with each other through the library and through the staff in the, in the children's department of the library. And I spent a lot of years on the, on the, on the library board, as we know, I'm an expert in customer service. But, yeah, that's right, and it's in writing. But the point was that, that this library, the staff, the boards of directors, and has worked very hard with their community connection and being, being of service to people basically from birth through senior citizen. And the fact that there are people in, and staff in that library who were able to connect with people who did not, had just moved into town, I thought was, that made me very happy because we do work on a lot of programs with the library, but it's nice to know that the staff is tuned in to and also supportive of the, of this program. And so, I think the community outreach here and the community support is a really important thing. So, that was my addition. Thank you. No more jokes.
Anyone else? Okay. And so, we'll go on to the Finance and Information Management Committee, but Polly, you get to keep going.
Oh, gosh.
No more jokes.
Yeah, well, when we talk about the state budget, that was one of the items on there that, and we're not laughing. But at any rate, we, we did have a conversation about the, about the upcoming, or the present budget, and I think Mr. Emmett hit on some of the highlights. We are, basically, the, what we do find is that at this particular point, our numbers are really driven by the fact that we had some new outplacements in this, this particular month, and also the fact that our utility costs were high specifically at the, or primarily at the high school. Again, keeping in mind that this is the end of the month, these are the end-of-the-month numbers, and they don't reflect the entire year. But at this particular point, with, fortunately, the budget freeze, I think, will give us, will give us some support in the fact that, as you can see, there are costs that have cropped up. And we are concerned about, where do we, the special ed numbers are always fluid. We've had, we had eight new outplacements this month, and we could have some, we could have more, or we could have some people come back. So, that is, and the transportation that goes with it. So, that's where we are at this point, and we also discussed transportation. The, the school year has started out with some bumps in the, with autumn as far as the transportation is concerned, but the, and I'm not sure of his last name, Sal, who is the owner, has come in, he's met, and he's been very cooperative with working out any of the new, that, you know, the new school schedule bumps. But from what I do understand, the transportation, as far as the field trips and the athletics, has gone pretty well, and those are two things that were a serious problem in the past. So, that's our report tonight.
Polly, where, I received a sheet as I sat here this morning, I mean, this afternoon from Matt, and where on that sheet to summarize, does it show us the eight outplacement, the cost for, whoops, I forgot to turn it.
Page two. Yeah, that comes out of other purchase services.
Thank you.
Yes.
Diane?
I think Kevin was first.
Kevin?
The potential savings of the $542,000, is that solely from the budget freeze? Or if so, what, what else?
That's, that's money saved from the budget freeze.
Okay.
Yes.
Diane?
One of the other things that we discussed, and this came up during our Programs and Services meeting this past spring, when we were talking about the special ed programs, was looking into the regionalization of special ed services. And we mentioned with the new board, possibly- And we mentioned with the new board possibly approaching some of the other area-town boards, and getting together and kind of brainstorming what we can do so we don't see these high special ed costs. We're kind of held at the, have the gun to our head as far as the Crec, the expense of the Crec, and some of the other outplacement services. So if we look at creating our own in-house regional type of thing, we maybe will save money. Also, this would be a new concept, and the regionalization is really something that the legislature has been focusing on for years now. So now the time might be right to look at that and be in the forefront of that.
Yep, I agree. Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else on our finances? John?
Just one comment. The $500,000 in savings is a nice number, and it sounds like we're saving a real lot of stuff, but it's because we're not buying things that we do need.
Correct.
It may be something that we get haunted by later, because one of those things is deferred maintenance. We all know that if you defer maintenance, it costs twice as much when you have to do it, and you always have to do it. And it's the supplies and things that we're not buying, it's textbooks we're not buying. So it's necessary right now as a prudent planning mechanism, but it's not real savings that we're just going to not have to pay for. We're going to have to pay for it somehow.
That does also include the unfilled positions.
Correct.
That we have. So that's a, and that's a big, that's a big factor.
Matthew?
I just wanted to support Ms. Fitzpatrick, Diane, Diane's thoughts on the possible regionalization and the reduction of the cost, performing the same service but reducing the cost to supply that service to our students for in-houseing. But the secondary idea, which has been tossed around, which I do think should be brought up in the same breadth, is Mr. Morris's idea of being able to bill out the noneducational, the noneducational portion of those services, basically a lot of the medical, to private health, if possible. So that, again, that would, not only would we be reducing the cost, but we'd also be able to offset some of our, possibly offset some of our responsibility in that manner. So it could be something good to look at, since this is such a large portion and volatile portion of our budget in order to bring, rein in some of those costs. And I think those are two good ideas to look into. How they pan out will be another day, but certainly, I think, worth the effort.
Thank you, Matthew. Okay, anyone else? All right. So we'll go on to meetings scheduled. We have School Projects Building Committee on November 6th. Weatherfield Early Childhood Collaborative, WEC, is on November 13th at 4:30. So is there anyone wishing to make a public comment? Please come on up to the podium and state your name and address, and may I remind you that public comments are limited to five minutes. Okay? All right. Are there any board comments? John?
Yeah, I wanted to, just, I wanted to do this in the comments when Superintendent basically was speaking. It had to do with Fred following through on the gym floors while we were lucky that we were able to hold the vendor, you know, liable for that. And I just wanted to publicly thank Fred for staying on top of it and allowing us the ability to get that problem resolved, you know, chemical product, I think is important. And, you know, it would have been a pretty big penny for us as a district to take care of if the vendors didn't come forward. So, all right, that was it.
Polly?
I just wanted to mention, as people may be aware, we have an election coming up the beginning of November. And one of the things that the WSPC has done, and they've sponsored this in the past, is they will be sponsoring a candidate forum for all Board of Ed candidates on November 1st at the, at Webb. And they have, they've asked Leslie Civitello, who works for the Chamber of Commerce, to moderate. And one of the, one of the things that they are in the process, the WSPC is in the process of doing now, is getting input from the, from parents and from students as far as questions that they would like to see board candidates answer. And this in the past has been a terrific, has really been a terrific opportunity, I think, for the public and for also, obviously, any candidates to, but, so I would encourage anyone who is interested in this, because we will have a completely different board the next time. And just on that note, I just wanted to say that I think I'm proud of the fact that we've, that we have our strategic plan in process, that there are people in the community and the board who are working on a foundation to look for other ways of providing programs and services to the educational system. And I think we should all be very proud of ourselves, because for two years, I think we've done a, we've come together as a really good group of people. And we haven't had a whole lot of major drama, and I personally am very happy to have, to serve with everybody, so I just wanted to mention that.
Well, thanks, Polly. Anyone else with comments? I did want to mention a meeting I went to on Thursday, October 19th. I attended the Keen on Kids Coalition meeting. This group, this coalition is a collaboration of the Keen Foundation, Park and Rec, Social Youth Services, YMCA, our library, and the Board of Ed. The agenda included a review of our current after-school programs, and Caroline Vazina had come, and she had spoken of them. And this is for elementary and middle schoolers, and of course, the other Keen programs, which are numerous. There was also discussion of the highly successful and profitable Cove Carnival. This year's monies will also be distributed to the Fire and Police Department for their work with our town's young people. And this Keen for Kids, it continues to be a very successful coalition set to help our youngest citizens by providing a safe, fun environment for them to participate in athletics, academics, and other events. And I need to say it, thank you fairy godmother Judy Keen. It is just a delight to work with her. And before I turn it over to Justin on life at the high school, I, too, just want to say, this is our last time together for a span of time, for a whole meeting. I hope everybody goes out to vote on Tuesday, November 7th. It's very important. It's your democratic right to vote. And so we all won't be here next time. But it has been one of the honors of my life to be chair of this board, and to work with you people has just been an experience of a lifetime. So thank you all. Thank you. Okay, so now, Justin, life at the high school.
Thank you, Ms. Granato. I was very pleased to assist with the board, along with a few other students, to create a strategic plan video for the district, and in the future, assist Blue Eagle Productions with their new community channel. The fall sports season is beginning to come to an end, with many teams recently holding their senior nights. All WHS students will be attending a presentation on the dangers and implications of misusing social media this Friday. Today and tomorrow, were and is, minimum school days for students at the high school, with professional development being held in the afternoon for teachers and faculty. Students from the Future Educators Club will be traveling to, I believe, Charles Wright next Friday to practice teaching lessons to students.
Oh, good.
And WHS Drama Club's fall production of the Shutter Season will also be next weekend, Friday, November 3rd, and Saturday, the 4th, at 7:30, excuse me, 7:30 PM in the high school auditorium. Tickets are $10 for adults and $5 for students and seniors. And I also want to wish all of the Board of Ed and Town Council members good luck in their elections.
Thanks, Justin. Okay, so no one else? May I have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
So moved.
Okay. All those in favor? Aye. All opposed? Any abstentions? So this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, and good night.